And Jeff, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And good morning. I just welcome you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter and that Robert is in the front row if you need a listening device. And with that, we'll move on.
Routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. A motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any additional comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of January 28th, 2014, and the joint meeting of January 28th, 2014.
Move minutes, second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the meetings from the county commission meeting and the joint meeting from last week. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item number three are bills to be paid in the amount of $408,364.14.
Have a motion on the bills.
Pay the bills. Second, paying the bills.
Have a motion and a second on the bills. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item five are personnel actions. A is a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
I'll move routine actions.
I have a motion and a second. Carrie, do you have any comments?
No comments.
Okay. Any questions for Carrie? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously on the personnel, on the routine motion.
Item B is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for February 2014.
Good morning. I have three anniversaries to be celebrated in February. First is Maggie Gary in the HR office celebrating five years of service. Second, we have Jason Torine in IT celebrating 10. And then we have Robyn Ketchum in the registered deeds office celebrating 20 years. And I see that Robyn is here. 20 years is a big mark. Care to say a few words?
No.
Well, our thanks go out to all those people including Robyn. Thanks for coming this morning.
Thanks for coming, Robyn. Item C is to recognize volunteers and county government for January 2014.
For January, we had 224 volunteers in five different areas of counties. So again, our thanks go out to those folks who helped us tremendously.
And we do take an opportunity every month to thank all the people that have worked for us and volunteered their time during the month. And we do greatly appreciate what they do for us. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six is application for abatement. Pam Nelson.
Morning. We have two elderly freeze, assessment freeze abatements. The first one is for ID number 16014, and it's for $1,522.39. And the other one is for ID number 11991, and that's for $29.35. And the difference is that the larger amount one is for a very elderly lady, like 86, and the other one person is only like 21, so they're 71. So, the older you are, the better the deal.
I'm glad he's not 21.
Move approval of these two elderly.
Can we do them together?
Yes.
Okay. We can do them together. I have a motion. I have a motion.
And a second.
And a second. Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve elderly freeze, ID number 16014 and ID number 11991. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Item seven are notices and requests. A notice from the Sioux Empire Safety Village of their intent to conduct a fundraising raffle event on February 27th, 2014. That has been received. Item number eight are planning and zoning notices. There are two items. The first item is a first reading and authorized county auditor to publish a notice of hearing to consider rezoning 14-01, to rezone from the A1 agricultural district to the light industrial district in tract two, Benson's addition, west half, southwest quarter, section 17, township 103 north, range 50 west, located on the south side of Lyons. Dave Heindl.
Good morning, commissioners. David Heindl, Planning and Zoning Department. We received a rezoning request 14-01 to rezone a parcel of land approximately 11.54 acres in size from A1 agricultural district to the I1 light industrial district on the south side of Lyons for future development. Staffers requesting that a hearing date of February 25th, 2014 be set. The planning commission voted unanimously to approve rezoning 14-01. A map in the draft minutes from January 27th, 2014. Planning commission is included for your review. Action to be taken is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice that a public hearing on amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County will be held on February 25th, 2014 at 9:00 a.m. at a meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission.
Could make a motion to authorize the auditor publish a notice. Second.
Are there any questions or comments for David? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Item B is the first reading and authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of hearing to consider rezoning 14-02, to rezone from the A1 agricultural district to the I1 light industrial district in the southwest quarter, northwest quarter, except H-2, section 18, township 102 north, range 49 west, located approximately one quarter mile south of Crooks Renner exit, directly adjacent to I-29 northbound. David Heindl.
David, again. Rezoning request 14-02 has been submitted to rezone a parcel of land approximately 31.72 acres in size from the A1 agricultural district to the I1 light industrial district at the southeast quadrant of the Crooks exit for future development. Staffers requesting that a hearing date of February 25th, 2014 be set. Planning commission voted unanimously to approve rezoning 14-02. A map in the draft minutes from the January 27th, 2014. Planning commission is included for your review. Action to be taken is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice that a public hearing on an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County will be held on February 25th, 2014 at 9:00 a.m. at a meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission.
Make a motion to authorize the auditor to publish notice. Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize publication of notice, of the notice of the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, David.
Thank you. Item nine is petition for compromise of lien. John Pecas.
Yes, thank you, Cindy. This is on DPNO number 62580 in the amount of $5,794.69. The Minnehaha County Commission received a request to compromise a lien from the applicant. There's no real estate involved with this current application. The county aid lien runs basically $5,794.69. It was started in February of 2007 and runs through December of 2013, just at the end of last year. The lien was for hospitalization bills as well as public defender and public advocate's office. There's been no payment made on any of these accounts. The only communication that the office has received has been through a series of emails. The applicant indicated that she unfortunately is not able to pay any portion of the lien and that she understood that the services were to be provided to her and that there would not be any sort of payment for her receiving of any of the services. She disputes the legitimacy of the liens and the amounts listed for the attorney services, and she also, of course, claims that she would not be held liable. Unfortunately, the application was not notarized. We've discussed this recently in regards to the obligations that we have related to submitting applications for the lien. It was not notarized. Once again, she indicated, at least from writing emails, that she is unemployed, she has no resources, and she unfortunately has limited financial statement information. Once again, she is requesting a complete compromise of the lien without any payment. So, in the spirit of comity and the established precedent, but not policy, of taking 50 cents on the dollar, I'll make a motion for $2,897.35. I don't know if I'll get a second.
There's a motion on the table. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second that. If we got $2,000 bucks, I'd be happy.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any other questions or comments?
Just to be clear, you seconded the $2,897.35.
Yes, I did.
Okay. Sorry, not 2,000. Okay.
Is there any other comments or questions?
Well, question would be now, does the lien stay in place until we receive the $2,800?
For one year. And then it goes back to the full amount.
Commissioner Pecas is correct in that the lien account will remain there, and there would be one year to make, to satisfy the terms of the compromise and get payment within one year for that amount. If no payment is received and that the lien stays, of course, at its same amount, and that, or if she did make payments on the lien but less than the amount that you've authorized, it would still show a reduction based on what she actually paid.
Any other questions or comments?
I would like to say that this was an incomplete filing. There was no notary on this, and the financial statements were also incomplete. There was nothing to support the documents that she wrote. And so, I won't support it on that reason only. If the documents were completed, I would probably be more in favor of the 50%. So, that being said, we're going to do-
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Your argument has swayed me. I don't think I'm going to support my own motion.
I'm going to ask for a roll call vote on this, though.
Commissioner Kelly?
No.
Pecas?
No.
Benega? Oh, sorry. Barth?
No.
Hiberger?
No. Motion fails four to zero.
I would move to deny the request.
So, a subsequent motion is to deny the request of a motion and a second. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously to deny the request.
The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
Is there anyone here that would like to have a public comment before we move on? This is strictly non-agenda items. And seeing none, we will move on.
Regular business. Item number 10 is to authorize the chairman to sign equitable sharing agreement for participation in the U.S. Department of Justice asset forfeiture program. Kristen Trana.
Good morning. I'm Kristen Trana from the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. I'm bringing to you an item that I bring every year about this time. As a requirement to participate in the asset forfeiture program through the Department of Justice, we have to complete this annual certification report and have the authorized representative sign this agreement. Through the asset forfeiture program, the Department of Justice is able to distribute the forfeited cash and property to the participating agencies in different cases. And so, by entering into this agreement, it allows us to be a part of that program.
So, we have the chairman to authorize the signing of an agreement between the U.S. Department of Justice asset programs. Any questions for Kristen?
Move to authorize the chairman to sign the sure agreement.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize signing the agreement. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item number 11 is consider a motion to ratify the county treasurer's signature on a corrected agreement with Data Systems Incorporated for hardware, software associated with the replacement of cash registered in the treasurer's office. The original contract was approved on July 30, 2013. Pam Nelson.
I'm kind of asking you to recertify the contract that you approved a while back. The numbers are exactly the same. We discovered, though, when we signed the original contract that they had put 2013 instead of 2014 when the payments were scheduled. And they also put the agreement together in one lump sum, and according to the auditor's office for audit purposes, we need to have taken out the capital asset part versus the maintenance contract. So, basically, all it does is it separates the two. The amount of the contract would allow a certain proportion for capital assets and the other portion for the maintenance contract agreements that we'd have. All the other numbers are the same. The payments are the same. Doesn't change a lot. But in order for the auditor to depreciate the stuff, we had to separate it. So, we just signed a different contract that delineates more clearly how we would be able to do that. So, I appreciate your support.
Make a motion to ratify the treasurer's signature on this revised contract. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Pam.
Item number 12 is consider a motion to authorize the sheriff's department to enter into an agreement with BI Incorporated for adult home detention electronic monitoring services. Michelle Boyd.
Good morning. Michelle Boyd with the sheriff's office. I'm here today to request your approval to enter into agreement with an electronic monitoring program that the sheriff's office has been working for a number of months, and we're ready to move forward with our plan to start transitioning our in custody work release inmates to primarily an electronically monitored program. This is going to be another alternative to incarceration that we've been working hard. We also have, as you know, the 24/7 program, the drug court program, the DUI program. So, we see this as a good system to help reduce the number of inmates in our facility. Through this program, we'll be able to reduce the jail beds out at the work release center and reduce some of the incarceration costs to the county because, as you know, the auditor's office estimates it's about $80 or just over $80 a day to house an inmate. This program, we would still have job verification and approval. We would still do random drug testing, alcohol testing. We would do site checks on the people that are on this program. So, we would still keep contact with them and ensure that they're following our program rules. The sheriff's decision to adopt this program has also received support from the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee that a number of you are on. And so, we feel that moving forward with this would couple with what we're trying to do in that committee. Attached, you're going to find the one-year electronic monitoring service agreement with a company called BI Incorporated. And our lieutenant, Axum, at the jail, has done a lot of research on this and has worked hard to try to find a system and a program that would work best for us here at Minnehaha County. It's renewable automatically for succeeding periods of one year unless otherwise terminated. The inmates would be required to pay $15 a day, and then we would pay $5.20 a day for the equipment and the monitoring service through this program.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning. I thought I'd just add a couple of things to the chief deputy's comments. In particular, this is another, what I'll call, relief valve. As you know, we're struggling with our numbers in our facilities. We would like to see our population at the downtown jail at about 360, 360 inmates at 400-bed jail. But with the classification of inmates, you never have all round pegs for round holes. And so, you know, 360 would be a good number. This weekend, we went from 360 or so on Friday to 425 on Sunday night. They walked across 78 people in the court yesterday. I think Aaron McGowan said they opened 23 new felony case filings over the weekend. And so, we continue to try to find relief valves for the pressure that we have on our jail numbers. However, when I say it's a relief valve, it is somewhat of a, more of a permanent one. I think we're transitioning into this work release with the technology today that allows us to have exclusion zones to protect, you know, or notify us if a person enters an area where maybe a victim of their crime lives or a prohibited area that they have. We can, we'll know when they're home. We'll know when they're at work. We'll be able to track that through the GPS system. It's going to be less expensive for inmates to be on work release under this program because it'll be about half the cost that they normally pay. But we'll have fewer expenses as well. We're not going to be feeding them. We're not going to be housing them overnight. And so, please keep in mind, this will be a transition because we want the judges to understand that in the future, as they, if they make someone eligible for work release, that they will be sentenced to, let's say, 30 days in jail eligible for work release. But that 30 days may be served on home detention, electronic monitored. However, if there's a violation, they will just return right to our jail. They won't go back to court, you know. And not everybody that's eligible for work release gets on work release based on our program rules. So, you know, we'll work with the courts, and we have had some initial conversations, and we've been working hard with them. Like the chief deputy said, Lieutenant Axum worked really hard on making sure the technology that we utilize is the best for our needs. And I see this eventually transitioning to the work release being all electronic monitoring work release for those that are able to go out and continue to work on these programs. So, that's, while it's a relief valve, also, I just want to clarify one thing, and that is we're reducing the number of low-risk inmates housed at the community corrections center, but our demand for jail beds is on higher-risk inmates. So, I'm not going to be able to take a lot of people from the downtown jail and move them out there, but I'm going to be able to have a more manageable number out at the work release center to deal with their lower-risk offenders. So, if you have any questions of myself, the chief deputy, or Lieutenant Axum.
Mr. Kelly.
Mike, all those that are on, we got, what, 25 on work release right now?
I think we're closer to, we're about 40 of our own.
Oh, okay.
Maybe eight or 10.
Are they all going to be eligible for this, or is there some that won't?
I would say that whole number eventually would be eligible, but because our work release was a different system, or the current system, when the judge made them eligible, you know, I can't really go retroactive and say, okay, now you all get out on house, you know, monitoring. So, that will be something on a case-by-case basis, a judge or an attorney may want to have someone, you know, reconsidered for that. But it would be more from this time forward that we'll make that program available. Once we've educated the judicial side and the attorneys understand what work release is, those, they'll be ironed out. A year from now, I would say the answer to your question would be yes.
Commissioner Pecas.
Well, I just want to champion exactly what the sheriff is trying to do here. This is a technological window that 15 years ago wasn't available. And now, these individuals are going to be at home. They're going to be working at their jobs. They're going to be able to pay their taxes to the county, to the city, to the state. They're going to keep their job, which is important, because if they keep their job, then their spouses and their children don't wind up over at Carol Muller's office, the human services seeking welfare. So, I think this is a win-win-win for our community, and I want to champion what Sheriff Milstead and his staff have done here. So, not only the fact that, you know, at this juncture, you know, there are a lot of limitations that we have regarding our jail space, and this is one of the safety valves that he said is available to us. So, this is a wonderful opportunity, and I'm really, really happy that you came up with this, Sheriff.
Commissioner Benega.
Question about a couple of things. When we've talked about the whole jail expansion issue and all that kind of stuff, the statistics show that 75% of those people that we start in the system, if you will, are there from one to three days, which, you know, is a little bit of variety. Will those people be served eventually by a system like this so that instead of going to jail for the weekend, they may go directly to their home? It'd be on that system if the judicial system accepts this change in mentality, if you will?
It's a really good question. And I will say that, you know, we're talking, you're talking basically there of pre-trial services.
Yeah, exactly.
And we're looking at, that's our next, that's our next area of research. We've been working with, I had a discussion even today with our state's attorney, Aaron McGowan, about some pre-trial options where maybe a lower-risk offender could be at home on electronic monitoring until their court date. Certainly, that relieves some pressure on the jail as well, and probably more on our main jail beds. So, the answer to that is yes. It's something that we're striving for. Here's the issue that I have with pre-trial right now is I have no line item in my budget to pay for those services. And so, we would have to work with the courts to establish a system where that person would pay for, or I have to find the funding to pay for that daily monitoring. And these are people different than work release. These are people that are pre-trial, so they've not been convicted of the crime they're accused of. And whether or not I can charge for that service or not, you know, we'll need to work with the state's attorney. But it is certainly something that's done in other jurisdictions, and certainly another relief valve that I think, and I think you agree from our, all of our criminal justice meetings, that's a big group of people. Our unsentenced inmates, just in the downtown jail today, is probably about 275 that are waiting trial. And if we could identify low-risk offenders that are probably there just because they don't have $700 or $1,000 for bond, those are also very expensive jail beds that they're not paying for that we could help free up. And whether, you know, when we're able to expand our jail bed numbers, the reality is we got to continue, we need to continue to work on these alternatives to make them available. I just have to be able to pay for it because if I start paying, you know, $5 a day for that monitoring device, even though it's $80 to hold them in the jail, I don't have an account to pay that out of. So, we have to identify how to fund that.
If I can follow up. Obviously, I understand the upfront costs, but sometimes, like everything else, an investment in technical services saves labor costs down the road and certainly capital costs. So, I don't know that it would make sense for us not to do this, frankly. Plus, the other thing is, is there's always a cost that I think someone discussed earlier about the fact, maybe it was John, that talked about the fact that I've seen this happen in close circumstances, so to speak, where people go to jail for the weekend, and on Monday morning, their boss finds out about it, and they no longer have a job, and then they don't have insurance, and then they write bad checks, and the system keeps getting uglier as it goes on. If we can prevent that kind of thing from happening, and if somebody makes a mistake once or twice or whatever, I don't know the system well enough to figure that out. I mean, this is a preventative issue from frankly, snowballing the whole cost of the judicial system where the state has found a way to reduce building their jail system down the road. And I don't know that we have the same problem as they do. But the issue is, is I think we need to look for alternatives rather than spending significant dollars upfront. The other thing that I have a question about, you may not be able to explain this to me in a few minutes, and maybe this is something we can talk about later in a different conversation, but the whole classification system, how do you classify whether these people are going to be high-risk, low-risk, medium-risk, or frankly, very little risk?
We actually, we actually helped develop our classification system, our newer classification system before we moved into the current jail, the 400-bed jail, and work, you know, under guidance of the national accreditation-like guidelines that we get from American Correction Association and other national organizations that help jails determine those, those classification systems. Because we have to have, we have to have a classification system that reduces the risk of mixing the wrong inmates or putting the wrong inmates into the wrong housing environment. We've just updated that classification system. In fact, Bill Garnell, who made some recommendations on our classification system, just sent us a letter today saying he's comfortable with our current, you know, our updated classification system. As, if we get into another facility, you know, in a year, two or three, whatever that may be, it would probably be a good time to go to a new classification tree. But right now, because of the level of the number of offenders that we have and our overabundance of dormitory low-risk beds, which outnumbered our number of low-risk offenders, it's very difficult to utilize anything other than our classification system. That's a, that's a long answer, but the reality is I think I'm comfortable with what we have updated today, but we will have to revisit it if we're going to go to a facility that really lets us appropriately house people with those classifications. As he pointed out, we are very, very heavy on low-risk dormitory beds, which because of all of our alternatives are less and less in demand, and we need regular jail cells, regular housing units for different classifications of inmates, and those are full all the time. And so, you know, we are going down that, that road and, but he's comfortable with our objective classification system that we haven't placed today.
Can I follow up with one more, and then I'm done for a while? Is the classification system a universal system that everybody in the country uses? Are there different systems that different people use based on what their facilities are?
It's, it's the latter. There's not just one standard template for an objective inmate classification system. There's recommendations. There's some that they call a decision tree where you move down from the offense to their criminal history. There's other ways that they attribute just numbers to them so that you know that this is a 19, and the number 20 is higher risk. The number 21 is higher yet. But there's some drawbacks to each one. So, if you, if you look at the national guidance, it is that you need to have an objective classification system. You need to consider the facilities and the beds you have available. And then, you know, you update that as, as things change, and that's what we're doing. We just did a refresh of ours because of the, of the overabundance of low-risk beds and our struggles with the work release center, you know, housing higher-risk offenders out there than should be out there just because our downtown jail is full. So, it is work in progress.
And then, Mr. Kelly.
Mike, does the, where's the $15- Mike, does the, where's the $15 go to, to the county?
15, yeah. Right now, an inmate on work release depends on, on what, you know, if you're out of county, in-county, what, if you're DOC, but it's about $30 a day to be on work release. This will reduce that cost to $15. Our cost on somebody that's $30, you know, you've got to include the cost of the bed, the cost of the meals. Obviously, we have some direct costs, but you see $30 in revenue. So, you know, I think my friendly auditor would remind us that when I reduce that $30 a day to $15 a day, you're going to see a decrease in that revenue number from work release. But you're also going to see an offsetting decrease to some point in some of our expenses. But more importantly, you're going to see a relief on the number of people out in that corrections facility, based on the fact that I've got people out there that probably shouldn't be there, we're housing them out there. They're the lowest-risk offenders that through our conditional use permit, we can house out there. So, they're legitimately out there. We're not violating our conditional use permit, but it's, it's, they're not on work release. They're regular jail inmates, it probably should be downtown, we just don't have room for them. So, so you're going to see some changes, but the $15 comes to the county, and then, and then we will pay the $5 and whatever cents to the daily fee out of that $15.
Well, then, if I may, would, would the pre-trial, if you were able to accommodate that, would they have to pay the $15 a day also, would it be similar to that?
Well, I mean, that's what I would, I would ask it.
They may not have the money, though.
That's the, that's the elephant in the room a little bit. I'm not sure if, if I can charge them, and if I can, you know, those are the early conversations we have, or if a judge waives the fee for me, and I think Commissioner Benega pointed out, it makes financial sense to do it if it's an $80 jail bed, and I can keep them out for $5.50, and they're not a threat to society. Now, I want to clarify, there's people that need to stay in jail until their trial, and there's people that we need to protect the public from, that need to stay in jail. But if, if we've got somebody in there that's not a threat to the public, and they're in there because they don't have $700 for bond, or $1,000 for bond, this might be an option available with courts that saves all of us money.
Any other comments, Commissioner Bell?
Well, the elephant in the room, obviously, is the possibility for another jail for us all, but obviously, I think we're all in support of electronic monitoring. I have a couple of questions on, along those lines. Are there other new devices coming along that, you know, automatically tase people when they leave their house, or something? No?
No, but if we get them, I'll try it out.
I guess also, you know, in some other communities, they, they process things a little differently. I know, I've heard you talk about Omaha and stuff, and is that a legislative issue there, or, or do we have, you know, the number of people we book into our jail, can we, can we, you know, use some decisions out right there in the field and say that, you know, some, some people could be towed and dropped off at home, or something, and ticketed?
Well, you're, you're very, you're kind of spot on with that question, because, you know, our discussions about Omaha is, you know, considering their population, they book about the same number of people into jail, booked into jail as we do.
Wow.
In a year. And that's because in Omaha, and Nebraska, they're, in particular, in the Omaha metro area, their site and release policy is much different than ours. People come to jail here, you know, on more charges than they would there, where in their case, it would be a traffic ticket, maybe a tow truck and a cab. Here, it's, you know, a physical arrest, end of jail, and booked. So, here, the example being the 78 that we took over to court yesterday, probably 40 to 50% were going to be released yesterday. And did they really pose a risk to society that, over the weekend, while they sat in and occupied an $80-a-day jail bed? Well, for those who don't, looking at other alternatives to that, in custody until you can get, you know, have your first appearance in court, like Commissioner Benega mentioned, you know, how, you know, how important was it to have them housed away from the public for the weekend when they're okay to release on Monday? So, so those are some things that our Criminal Justice Committee has had some serious discussions on. We've had some discussions about doing some more research with other jurisdictions that do just what you're talking about. There's, they don't bring them to jail on, on certain offenses, they cite them, they release them, they make sure they're not a threat. But even in your case, Commissioner Benega, maybe some that are appropriate for, like an immediate electronic monitoring, or some type of house arrest, or participation in some type of a pre-trial service that gets them out of the jail if they're not a danger to the public.
Just a minute, Commissioner Pecos.
Well, Jeff brought up a, a good question, and you had a great response. I also want to point out that, you know, a lot of times when, whether it's a police officer or a sheriff deputy, when they're making that decision on whether or not to place somebody under arrest, that's kind of the judge's decision on what the conditions of release should be.
Right, yeah, I don't, we don't get to say.
Right.
You're under arrest for DWI, you don't have to go to jail.
Right.
You go to jail in this circuit.
Right. And, and the interesting part is that, I don't know if, you know, liability-wise, if there was a call made where, okay, fine, I'll, you know, get you a taxi, you can go home. The subsequent liability to the county, if something were to happen after that person left and decided to go and have more drinks, or get behind the wheel of a car at a later time, the liability, of course, comes back to Minnehaw County, because they were in our custody, and we let them go. So, it's, it's tough.
Yeah, but, you know, of course, if that same person gets to the jail, and as a county member with the cash, they can bond out, get in their car, and leave in an hour anyway. So, I mean, that's.
Yeah.
A lot of what we base things on are based on money. Whether you have money or not determines whether or not you get out of jail or not.
Commissioner Benega.
One more question, and I've forgotten the answer, but the issue is, is when someone literally pleads guilty, which doesn't happen too often anymore, it seems like, they want to negotiate that, the issue is, they may sit in jail for how long before they frankly are sentenced, and then may be released or put on work release?
Okay, well, the ones that we have the significant issue with are people who are in our custody, who are not, who are maybe on a more serious offense, that they can't bond out, and their bond is extremely high, and they pose a danger. And they're, they're awaiting their sentence for a felony that will undoubtedly going to land them in the state prison, in particular for us. That's, that's the most common one. And eight weeks out is kind of the automatic right now. So, if he's found guilty or pleads guilty today, it will likely be two months at minimum before they go back before the court to receive a sentence. And it could be on rape, robbery, murder, whatever. And so, and those can extend out. We've had them over a year, because they need a psychosexual evaluation on a sex offense, and then they appeal that hearing, that evaluation, and they get another one, and it can be a year. All of that time, they're, they're in an $80-a-day county jail bed. And one of the suggestions that we've had some conversations with, with both our Criminal Justice Committee and the presiding Judge Long, and I know that, that it has gotten as far as the Supreme Court Justice, and that is a conversation about looking at those people who are in custody, because in other jurisdictions, if it's an in-custody person, the pre-sentence investigation is fast-tracked. It goes to the top of the desk of the person who does pre-sentence investigations, and the typical turnaround on those is two weeks.
Right.
It doesn't take, it doesn't take a long time. I mean, it's, it's, it's a very important job doing a PSI, but it isn't an eight-week job. It's a, it's a, it's a few days worth of work. And when they realize that they are in custody, and it's critical to move them back into wherever they're going to end up, whether that's in our work release, or in our regular housing, or in the state prison, getting them tracked faster gets them into their programming better, it gets them in, you know, into the, into the, the programs that are going to try to reduce their recidivism. It, it improves the process, and there are jurisdictions, a number of judges across the nation that I've talked to, where they, they fast-track in custody, pre-sentence investigations to two weeks.
And those six weeks that they're averaging, the county's paying for those until they get to the state, correct?
All of it.
All of it. Another great formula.
Any other questions for the sheriff? I just have a couple of comments. Now that everybody else is done talking, I wanted to, basically, my notes said what John said, and just that getting these people out of jail saves us money in a lot of other places. And also, just wanted to address the cost where, he said it costs $5 a day, but yet we're charging 15. We're not making money by charging 15, that's to cover the cost. Somebody has to watch who's on electronic monitoring, I just wanted that to be clear. It's not a money-making project for us.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah, it's just to cover our costs with $15, so. Any other comments? I would look for a motion.
Here's a motion to approve the agreement with, for adult home detection. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item number 13 is to consider a resolution to adjust voting precinct boundaries for VP3, VP5, and VP15 within the city of Brandon. This was deferred from January 28th, 2014. Auditor Bobbles.
Good morning, Commissioner. Last week, we, you chose to defer this item, and, and I got a feeling that my lack of clarity in being able to explain that was to blame for that, and for that, I apologize. I've not been feeling well for about a week, and that includes today. However, the, the, I saw in the ensuing week that we had a bit of information passed back and forth, and I'm hoping that answered your questions, but I would, I would stand by to try to answer any more questions you might have, but the request is the same. I'd like to, I'd like to change our county precincts around to match the wards in Brandon for the voters' convenience.
Are there any other questions for Auditor Bobs?
I'll make a motion to approve it, I do have a comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second with a comment by Commissioner Barth.
At this point, I think if there is any issue, it's Brandon's issue, not the auditors or Minnehaw counties.
Any other comments? I have a motion and a second on the table to approve the adjusting of the voting precincts in Brandon. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Bob.
Item 14 is an update and status report of the 89th Legislative Session on Bills That Impact Minnehaw County. Robert Wilson.
Robert.
You're on.
Good morning, Commissioners. I apologize, I was chatting with the sheriff out, out there for a moment. Want to go over a couple of, a couple of bills that we've talked about over the last couple of weeks, and we've got a couple of new ones as well. House Bill 1028 was the one that I did mention last week that would have raised the reimbursement from the DOC to counties for parole violators in county custody, from $50 a day to $70. That had its first hearing last week, passed out of committee unopposed, 9-0, and then it also did pass the House by a wide margin as well, so that one looks like it's in pretty good shape. 1066, and I, this was an act to revise certain provisions restricting the presence of firearms in certain public buildings. And the essence of the bill was that individuals who had a concealed weapons permit would have been allowed to have, carry that, that weapon in either county courthouses or the state capitol. That was amended in committee to say that elected officials at, at any level, state, county, federal, water district, school district, road districts would be allowed, with, with a concealed weapons permit, would be allowed to carry, and that passed out of committee when, prior to being voted on on the floor, the SDACC and your, yourselves as the, as the county commission shared a message with, with local legislators that that could, would cause some serious problems for our law enforcement, and, and that was defeated on the House floor after getting out of committee, when many folks might not have expected that, to get out of committee. One building that, or one bill that you did have a fairly lengthy discussion on last week was House Bill 1096, an act to revise provisions concerning the campaign signs on the premise of non-publicly-owned buildings. And that is, I don't have a whole lot to add at this point, other than that is up for a committee hearing today. So, we'll have more information on that in next week, briefing memo, and bring you up to speed on that one as well. House Bill 1179, this was one that was brought to our attention by the Treasurer's Office, an act to provide a credit for the return of certain motor vehicle license plates. And, and as I, as I read the bill, if somebody has purchased their, paid for their license plate through the year, and at some point sells the vehicle, they could return that plate to the Treasurer's Office for a credit on the remaining amount of time that that had been purchased. Obviously, that would cause a number of budgeting issues for the Treasurer's Offices, specifically in counties as well. That has not been scheduled for a hearing yet, but it has been assigned to House Local Government, and we'll keep our eye on it. One of the main bills that this commission has championed and was endorsed by the SDACC is, has been dropped as House Bill 111, that would increase the maximum. Did I say House Bill? Senate Bill 111. Would increase the maximum level property tax increase from year to year, from 3% or CPI, whichever is less, to 3% or CPI, whichever is greater. As it was introduced, it does have a, a ceiling that's been placed on it as a 4%, but talking a little bit to Mark Lee with the chamber, the chamber has endorsed this bill as well, and made it part of their platform. From, from my discussions with him, that sounded like that real, that ceiling needed to be on it, or it was going to have some, some difficulty. So, that's been, been introduced, referred to Senate Appropriations, but has not been scheduled for a hearing just yet. And I, I don't know if, if Ken would want to, to make any comment on, on that.
Ken, you were up there last week, could you give us any input on it?
On the bill?
Yeah, I mean, what you heard up there, I don't know if you were up there pertaining that bill.
I'll be blunt, this bill's going to have a tough time in committee, and that, I know the association, and that worked really hard to get enough signatures to get the, the bill introduced, and that, and I'm just making sure that no one's under any illusions. I mean, this bill is going to be a tough sell, and that the association has asked that when that bill is scheduled for hearing, that, you know, we absolutely have to get our county commissioners up there to speak personally to some of the difficulties that, you know, the current legislation does. I mean, we, again, you know, we've provided our own delegation with how our budgets and our costs have not kept pace with the CPI, particularly as it relates to what cities and the state has enjoyed with the growth in the sales tax, and that, so, those, you know, we, we've done some groundwork, but again, this is going to be a tough bill to get passed in an election year with the state legislature. It just is.
Has it been filed yet?
Yes, it's Senate Bill 111.
And where's it going?
Senate Appropriations. Yeah, I kind of had that same thought, too.
Spoken as a senator.
Killing field.
So, again, that is also one of the reasons I, this bill's going to be tough sledding.
Could have been worse, could have been state affairs, I suppose.
Any other questions for Robert?
Well, just a comment, you know, I talked to Hal Wick and I this weekend, and I sense that, yeah, there just isn't any support there. Yeah, I'll listen, I'll look at it, but I don't think they realize, and, and I don't, I guess that's what the association's supposed to do, is fight tough wars, but.
Commissioner Barth?
Commissioner Kelly, I, I think they do realize, it's just that they feel no responsibility, and certainly don't assume any responsibility for actually doing the important business. They're, they're doing, you know, their own, their own little things, but they're, they're not caring for us, that's for sure at this point.
Any other comments? Questions for Robert? Okay, thank you, Robert.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I, could we ask Kyle a question or two?
Sure. Call in Kyle to the desk.
Kyle, you know those, pardon me, those bills on ag valuations and stuff? What, I know you said the one would require a lot of work for your staff and I wonder if you have any comment about that.
There is one bill that's going to change the way we value agricultural land to actual use and that is to be debated on the House floor this afternoon at 2:30. It came out of committee, I believe, nine to three or 12 to three. I don't think it has much as far as legs in that it will be a difficult bill to work with without some funding for the entire rest of the state. There is another bill that also changes the criteria of agricultural land to include timber. That again is a West River bill. It did not come out of the regular committee that sponsors changes in agricultural valuation methods. And again, that will come up in the Senate here pretty soon. I just don't feel it has much, it doesn't have much backing. We just wait and see. We implement, we don't legislate.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Want to move on?
Item 15 is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
This is the time for liaisons to report on their different assignments. Are there any comments?
Just on detox, the state's in doing its annual, is that what it is?
This will be for a three-year.
It'll be for a three-year period. So Carol seems to think that everything's in order and that will be a big deal if we say, if we pass that.
Yep, recertification for three years. Any other comments? Is there any news business?
Oh, yeah, I, I do have.
Commissioner Kelly?
It's just a suggestion that Brandon just, I don't know, what do you do with an opt-out? You stop it or?
Their TIF.
Uh, TIF, I'm sorry, yeah. Anyway, Brandon just closed out the TIF five years early, I think it was, or so. And we don't see that very often, that I've seen in the paper at least, and I really would hope that maybe the commission would urge the chairman to, to send him a note, just thanking him for their action. And I know, I know the Costco TIF is, are they going to close that out, Kyle? Maybe you ever were in a sellout, but, but, you know, these are things that finally put money back into the county coffers once, once the TIF is cleared, closed.
Kyle, you have some comments on TIF?
The TIF number one that they're talking about in Brandon is being, for lack of a better word, demolished, but the problem with it is it is also being absorbed by TIF number three.
Oops, I didn't know that.
Yeah, it's, they didn't get the whole story. It has been an interesting combination of TIFs to account for over the last five years. They created a donut hole by creating TIF three right over top of TIF one. Neither one of them were being paid off, so they dissolved TIF one, now it becomes TIF three. If that makes any sense, it's.
Based on further knowledge, I rescind my remark.
The Costco TIF is still a work in progress. They have to do some things through the city to dissolve it, but at least they're going away. That's a good thing.
Yep, that's a good thing. Commissioner Barth?
Yeah, and I, you know, we're all for urban development and we're all for progress and we all have to make sure that some of our more older areas are going to be redeveloped and that's exactly what the TIF is for. But, you know, once again, remember that money gets siloed for the purpose of helping the TIF, or excuse me, the development take place. And so when those get ended early, the real benefit isn't just Minnehaha County and the city of Brandon, but it'd also be that school district because they're waiting and, you know, anytime you have a TIF take place like that, we want to make sure that all the subdivisions are going to be able to get access to those funds.
It does help a lot with our growth numbers. It's one of our greatest losses for the TIF districts when we're talking about growth.
Any other questions for Kyle?
Thank you.
With that being said, we can adjourn into executive session for, oh, sorry, old business. See, no, ill business, we can adjourn into executive session for personnel litigation and legal briefing.
Just a motion.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion, our meeting adjourned.